Ryan Foley.
President.
Pat Mahoney is excused.
I'd like to -- everybody stand for the flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight we have a public hearing. Sheila, is that correct?
Pardon?
Public hearing.
Yep. Are you going to open it?
Yes, I'd like to open it right now.
I gave you a list. These are the people that want to speak.
Do you want to see what the public hearing is about, or?
It's budget.
Yeah. Anyways, we have some speakers tonight, and we'll have the public to be heard. First one is Steve Mouchlin.
Mullen.
Mullen. You want to just come over here to the microphone and?
And can Sandy vote?
Yes, she can join you, of course.
What's it, does that say?
My name is Steve Mullen. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees of the Aurora Free Library, and this is Sandy Growth, who is our library director. And in case you can't guess, we're here tonight, the short version of our speech is, please fund the libraries. I know you're in number season, I see Mr. Ripley has got his calculator out. So we'll hone in a couple of things that we have actually an infographic that we can pass around to you all. But basically, we -- all nine libraries in Cuyahoga County are in the business of literacy, education, and community. And we provide opportunities for people to access great things through books, magazines, the Internet, and cultural programs where people learn and they typically have fun. As some highlights, in 2017, there were approximately 208,000 library visits to each -- to our nine libraries. Our Wi-Fi access to the Internet was used approximately 36,000 times. And at Aurora Free Library, we know that for some of our patrons, we're the most dependable form of Internet access that they have available to them. And Cuyahoga County's libraries conducted 1,080 kids programs, 1,122 adult programs, and 663 early literacy programs. Libraries are here for your entire life. Sherry's gonna -- Sandy will share some stories that are kind of typical of a library and specific to Aurora Free.
One great joy came last year when a patron who had been coming for months to use our computers to search for and apply for jobs finally got one. So, you know, he didn't have a computer at home, needed that high-speed Internet, used our resources. We have parents and grandparents who appreciate our weekly story hour coming in, great to have that socialization for their kids and also socialization for themselves. Many are -- we have a lot of grandparents who are caregivers and really appreciate that. We have kids crying because they have to leave the library, they're having such a good time. And patrons who come in daily browsing, finding books, this is like they're -- a part of their daily life, just coming and gathering, just talking with people, since we're really in Aurora, the community center, the book store, just a place to meet and enjoy each other and learn from each other. The library is always sharing our resources so people can use what their small budgets can afford and use it efficiently by borrowing our materials and sharing them. And of course, as Steve mentioned, the high-speed Internet access, which is really helping to level the playing field and providing opportunity to access it. We're still unfortunately in much of our rural community, there is not that access. So we're able to provide it at the library.
Yeah, and our point is really that library funding helps us keep the doors open, as well followed by staff. And in turn, what happens if people can borrow books, they can come out, they can borrow many forms of resources, attend programs, and as part of that, help to provide really a better quality of life. So when you as a legislature vote upon libraries, you're sending a very clear message that yes, we do think this is important. So thank you very much, and wish you luck in the budget season here, and we hope for a great outing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can we hear from Mickey Pelosi?
Hi, I'm back again tonight to speak on behalf of Cuyahoga County Cornell Cooperative Extension. I talked last week about our plans moving forward with the retirement of the executive director. We are still providing programming in 4-H, nutrition education, master gardeners, and agricultural production. We do these programmings because of the funding that comes from the county legislature. You probably know that the county appropriations is just one of the legs of our funding. We can use that county money to leverage state funding and also federal funding. So the three partners, three government partners financing the programming that we do. We do receive grants, and we can use some of that public funding as a basis for applying for grants. And then we use that funding for programming where we do not charge a fee. The funding that comes from the county is very important. If we didn't have county funding, we would not be getting state or federal funding. So we appreciate your time, and we appreciate your funding for the programs through cooperative extension.
Thank you. Is Rebecca Spooner?
Hi, so I'm here also about the libraries funding. I know that you guys have a lot on your plate with just a lot to consider with the budget that you're putting together. So I guess I would just ask that you also do consider the library, just because I'm one of many, many people in Cuyahoga County who homeschool, and our kids really, really rely on these libraries. Just for me, one of the things that we really need the library for is our literature books, our history books, science books. We're down at the library a lot getting these things. But something else that the libraries offer for us is they have a whole bunch of resources on their webpage that like us homeschoolers have access to, that we really, really use a lot. But the other thing that is really important is the girls that sit behind the desk at the library. I come down with all kinds of questions that I have to ask them, and I was trying to get my son to just read. He had no interest at all. A second grader boy has more important things to do, I guess. And I had read books about how to do it, I had tried all different kinds of reading, and I went down and talked with the girls, and they gave me some ideas, and it totally worked, and he loves to read now, and he's in high school, and he's reading his history textbooks and his science textbooks, and he's telling his cousins all of this information. And he's not just reading, he's comprehending what he's reading as well. So to not have these libraries would be a big deal to the just huge community of homeschoolers that are in Cuyahoga County, all over Cuyahoga County. So I would just thank you for considering that.
Thank you.
I'm Lori Cochran, I'm the Director of Powers Library in Moravia. And Rebecca's from our area, and I first wanted to say that I've lived half my life in Auburn. There's access to things in Auburn, whereas communities like Cato, Sterling, Moravian Lock don't have access as easily as you do here. So when I moved to Moravia 25 years ago, that was the first place I went. It was a place you find out things about your area that you're going to live in. And, you know, for those of you that, you know, consider not funding libraries, please take some time sometime, visit our libraries, look around, you'll run into meaningful and magical moments that you just can't see on the infographic. And I have a letter that I'd like to read from one of my special patrons. "Powers Library is an essential part of the community of Moravia, and it needs to have its funding maintained or increased for the future. In a world that is becoming more fragmented, the library allows us to have a place where the importance of small-town life is appreciated. The library holds special community events, hosts school groups from public school, as well as the homeschool families in the area, and allows our children to have a safe place to go in the absence of a community center. The summer reading programs and story hours are very well-attended. Powers Library really is the heart of the community, as well as in other small towns. On a personal note, the first trip my newborn took almost 10 years ago was to the Powers Library, and we have been back almost every week since. We go not only for the books, but also for the DVDs and special technological things like the video games, the playaways, the audiobooks, that any nine-year-old boy would enjoy. The staff is always willing and able to suggest new authors and series that we haven't discovered yet, and the collections have something for everyone. As a professor at a nearby Wells College, I experience the importance of reading every day. Students need small libraries in their hometowns to create lifelong reading habits that will benefit them for the future. Our small libraries in Cuyahoga County are a necessary first step. Please keep or increase their funding. Sincerely, Jaclyn Schnur, Ph.D., Professor of Biology and Environmental Science, Wells College." And on a personal note, this woman is the one that tragically lost her husband and her father in that limo accident. And I attended their funeral, and I just have to say, the first thing out of their son's mouth to me when they saw me, well, I'll be there tomorrow. So these are the kinds of things that this funding helps support. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, I just want to say that one of our legislators is homeschooled too, so.
Not anymore.
You're in the real world. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Anybody else want to be heard tonight in regards to the budget? Any facet of the budget, doesn't have to just be libraries. Do we want to discuss that line item, so they might leave, or no? What do you want to do? Mr. Ripley, did you want to?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just maybe in order to move the meeting along, we do have like one, which is the budget, maybe we want to go ahead and move on that, and then offer, if there's any amendments, including the libraries after we move it.
That's a wonderful suggestion. Anybody else?
I'll move, let you know.
Second.
Should we have a roll call vote on it?
Well, let's have discussion, Timmy.
Oh, we'll have a little discussion, I guess. I thought you wanted to move the meeting along.
Okay, so.
Yes, Ms. Foley.
Okay, so we do have a couple of amendments that I want to propose. It won't be specific to libraries right now, but I do support the libraries, so I can not give daddy a stone at me while we're talking. So every legislator received this sheet that we have in front of us, and that's where I'll mainly be discussing for right now. If you remember when we started going over the budget for Ways and Means, we went through everything a couple of times, through committees, and then we had a meeting a couple weeks ago now that started to reduce the budget, and that was when we went from 2.9% to 2.4%. We reduced the fund balance usage, it was very good. After that, I think there was a group that came together and said, you know, I think we can hammer down on the budget a little bit more, the more we looked over it. And so we kind of sat down and came up with what we think is some thoughtful amendments to this budget that we would like to implement. So going first, what you will see is the following lines, there's seven of them. And so what we are going to do with these, I'll give you the overview of what my proposal is, what the group's proposal is, before we kind of get into what they are. There are seven lines here that we hope to not take out of the budget, it's not a cut, it is simply moving the funds that we would be dedicating to those positions into a separate line, in a total line, and waiting for a presentation from our county administrator to go into more detail on how they benefit us, and save us money, and offer a bigger priority list, and how they fit into our organization. So for instance, the first line you will see is called professional services, that's going to be $55,000. If you remember, I sat at Ways and Means, and I said, I support implementing and upgrading our ADP system. I thought it was smart. Problem with it going like this is that it doesn't show what we save, it doesn't show the true implementation cost. What was asked of Justin, and this is not a reflection on so much Justin, is just the overall process, is that what was asked of him, how will this save us money? And he said, well, you know, currently all the way they track it is handwritten, putting in their hour trances. And so those people won't have to handwrite it, they can instead do it on the computer, and that will save time and become more efficient as a process. That's great, but what we'd like to see is how much money that can possibly save. Can those people in their job duties be used for something different, and how their efficiencies will take place? So that's what we're hoping to see from all of these lines, and I'll just go through the other six, just to give an explanation if anyone has any question. The planning was for $1,300 roughly, was a --
Senior upgrader.
It was just a senior upgrader for that position. The HR position was the other half of the position that we reduced at Ways and Means. The county clerk's position is the two part-time positions that were folded into a full-time position, those will remain two part-time positions. There was, there's an IT position in there, and if you remember, we did have a discussion with Steve, that position does seem warranted. We need to see an overall org chart on how that's going to save our county money and become more efficient before we approve that as a positional increase going forward. We have the DSS senior attorney position that was for $5,800. And finally, we have soil and water. I don't know the legislator in here that does not support soil and water. They came to us, they asked us for $33,000, and we said, well, how, what is this for? They said it was for a grant-funded position, they received $20,000 from a grant, and they want a couple of $33,000 with that, create a position in that department that helps with soil and water and their duties. How does it do that? I remember asking at the committee, has soil and water increased their revenue following up to this point? We were supposed to be sent numbers, those numbers were never sent to us. And it's not, I think we need to see those numbers before we approve additional funds going forward. And that has to be presented by Justin, and it has to be done in a way that is wholesome in totality, and that shows us how his priorities are going to help us, save us more money, what they truly cost, and what the timeline is for those. And so, again, what moving these lines does, not take them out of the budget, but it puts them into a reserve account for next year. Once he provides us that information, we can approve them going forward.
Thank you for that. I got Mr. Bennett had his hand up first, Mr. Pinkney.
Could we have the line numbers that you're trying to change, please?
Yeah, they're right on the left.
No, they're not.
Left-hand side. Right, left-hand side.
Yeah.
Those are the subgroups, but.
Um, Mr.
So it's 10-10, what's, where's 10-10?
Mr. Bennett, just for procedural clarification, can you make a motion, Mr. Foley, so we can have a second, then we can have discussion?
Yeah, so I'll offer those up as amendments in total, as an amendment to the 2019 budget.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Elaine wants a second, now we can have a discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out which lines we're trying to change on all these. I know you say you have eight, 10-10, but 10-10, oh four, what? 54, oh 59, it appears as professional services, you know, I'd like to have a look at these lines individually.
Mr. Bennett, I think that our administrator would like to clarify.
I could explain these lines. The professional services line is in the county legislature's budget. The adjustments here are to the salary lines that were.
I understand where they're at, you know, 10-10 is legislative, I understand that, you know, you got planning, but what is the actual line? You know, is it eight, 10-10, four dash, I happen to find professional services. It's eight, 10-10, four dash, 54, oh 59.
Maybe page numbers will help.
Yeah, page numbers, or at least a total line number. You know, these random numbering, it doesn't hit the spot. You look at the other two that are going to be coming up, they appear to have all their numbers in a row there.
Right. They were, I think they were on there, and when it got formatted, they were lost. My apologies, Joe.
Mr. Foley, Mr. Whitman would like to, oh, Mr. Pinkney was first, Mr. Whitman, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, going down through that list that Ryan gave, soil and water's original ask was for $80,000, and I think the last explanation of Ways and Means was the $33,000 allocation was towards a position that had been taken out of their operation, along with some grant money and money that they were going to raise to fulfill the position. So I just want to make sure those numbers were presented.
Mr. Whitman.
So I just want to make sure I understand the motion here, or what the plan is. We're going to take all of these lines for a total of $208,000 and put it in a reserve?
Correct.
It's not a reserve, it's a different line.
Provision for salary adjustment.
Right, provisions for salary.
It's still in the budget, is it not?
Right. So when we, they'll all be grouped on that one line, and then they'll come out for a full legislative vote, one by one, next year.
So I would assume that the idea behind this is to have full control of each one of these and whether or not we want it to happen. I can't help but think that means we don't want it to happen, and at the end of the year, these funds are going to go into our ever-growing fund balance. And it's still money that was charged to the taxpayers, why not give them the services that they're paying for with it?
Elaine?
I think being part of the discussion here, the provision for salary adjustment was the question I asked in the beginning. This is not the same as contingency, that would require a two-thirds vote, which would sort of handcuff this money coming forward. The intent was, as this, as these initiatives get rolled out and implemented, that, you know, as Justin brings them forward, in whatever priority he feels, or all at once, if that's how he feels, with the approved move comes an overall plan of how all of these particular initiatives or positions are going to roll out, what's the cost effectiveness and efficiency to them, and just a more focused look at, is it right to, ADP sounds like a great initiative. Should we implement an ADP program? Is that really going to solve the payroll issues that we have here? Given the fact that he must have done some evaluation of that, then there will be further discussion to say, we want, I want ADP, and this is what I think it can do, and this is what I think in terms of overall staffing, the impact will be. And again, same with the HR associate, this is still half of a year's funding, but at this point, this is predicated, I assume, that the HR director comes in and says, here's how I'm going to organize my office. Basically, it was not an intent to handcuff these particular positions and require a two-thirds vote to get them out, it was really just a more focused look at all of these various initiatives that we're hoping to fund.
Mr. Dennison.
Moving these to the salary provisions for salary adjustment line doesn't lower the budget. I mean, I kind of get where you're going, but I also think we have discussed a lot of these things, so if you're in favor of them, fine, if you're not, fine, let's vote on them. I mean, I just, I don't know, maybe I've gone to meetings that other people haven't gone to, I'm not sure, but it seems like we're kicking it down the road, I don't know, and we're not saving any money doing it. I mean, I'm perfectly fine with if you don't want professional services, vote no on it. If you do want it, vote yes on it, but I just, I don't see moving it two, three months from now, and then let's see if it's something we want to do, and how is that going to impact the budget, and I don't know.
Justin.
Mr. Chair, whether this is moved or not, the legislature has to approve any one of these acts. Just because it's in the budget where it currently is, if we seek to change a position, we have to get an authorization to create and fill and abolish. If we seek to enter into a contract of this size, we have to bring it back to the legislature for approval. So just because it's in the budget, there is still a requirement that we bring those things back to the legislature through the committee process for oversight, review, deliberation, and approval. So the administration doesn't oppose this or support it, it really doesn't impact, you know, the availability of funds or the initiatives that we're looking to move forward, but I don't think it has a real impact either.
Speechless.
I'd just like to echo my concerns in that I feel like if we are going to make some cuts, let's do it, so, and also, I'm concerned about these offering as, was it here, intend to offer them as a bundle?
Yeah.
Okay, so like, I would rather address each of them individually, if so, so just I wanted to echo my concerns.
I think our financier would like to.
Mr. Chair. I think.
The one thing I wanted to say is I'm a little concerned about moving some of these things into this account, and the misrepresentation of budgeting, this account is called for the different salary adjustments, and we're basically hiding a contractual amount in there for an ADP software and new positions. And a few of them are salary adjustments, you could say, they maybe would go in there, but I mean, to just pick an account and say, let's put the money in there arbitrarily, there's going to be a lot of problems when we look back at budgets in future years, and why did I, did budgeting have this money in that account? It could lead to a lot of confusion.
Maybe Mr. Palermo can clarify that.
First, I think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Peters, I would assume that was a motion to separate. Mr. Foley had a motion, which I believe had a second.
Bundle, or to separate?
Well, Mr. Foley had a motion to look at this group of amendments to the budget on the table.
Yeah, they can be done individually if we want.
But then I think you had a motion by Mr. Peters to separate, to separate this question, so I think we need a second on that motion.
Second. Okay, second.
And then with respect to, you want me to respond to Ms. Marinelli?
Yes, please.
I think that's exactly right, I think the provision for salary adjustments historically, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that was a line item that was used during periods of time when we had negotiations ongoing. when we had negotiations ongoing that spanned years with the various unions. We would set money aside so that we could have retroactive pay increases, which were typically part of the budget negoti, or the contract negotiation process. To kind of intermingle those amounts into that account, I think does create some problems for, from a historical perspective, when you go back and try to see, and I think, as Ms. Daley pointed out, it really doesn't change the fact that at some point, you're going to get a resolution perhaps to contract with ADP for time management, time record management. Whether that resolution references budget account number A101454059 versus, you know, the provision for salary adjustment, honestly, I don't think that's going to play into your deliberations at all. So I think, I guess I echo what Mr. Woods has said. I really don't have an opinion to offer, but as far as transparent budgeting for the public, I think it makes more sense to leave them where they are.
Anybody else on that subject? I see on this piece of paper, Elaine had some differences, and then... Yeah. So you want to go separate?
Well, I just, I need some clarification. So, there's a motion and a second. A motion and a second.
Really?
So, help.
We just, we just need a vote on whether or not you're going to separate these.
Or vote on them as a bundle.
Correct.
It's not table. It's not table. You either vote, right now, the motion on the floor is either separate them or vote on them as a bundle. After that decision is made, then the motion is to address Mr. Foley's motion, which is on the table. But your motion to separate is what's on the floor.
Okay, just for clarification, I'm okay taking it as a friendly amendment. If he wants, if he doesn't want them bundled, then we're going to do them individually. We can, I think we can do that.
You can.
So, we'll do them.
Mr. Batman?
May I point out that the issue of moving this, these accounts are not moving, separate from the consideration of whether or not one or more of these would be eliminated later. So it's not the, and if that's what Mr. Peters is getting at. Later in the meeting, Mr. Peters can make a motion to eliminate fifty-five thousand dollars for the, set aside for the, or anything else, even though those are set aside.
So we'll just go from that account? This move to that account, and then it would be eliminated?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what you, if that's the reason you wanted to do them separately.
Okay. Capture the funds.
Let me just make sure I'm correct. I mean, what I know about budgets is, it's a living, breathing document. It's, if we pass this tonight, we can increase it or decrease it during the term of the policy. Is that correct? It's only just to set the property tax rate, more or less.
Correct.
So, you know, what we do here tonight is not in concrete. I mean, it's, we can move it up or down during the course of the year as we see fit.
Yeah, I would draw my motion to separate.
Do you want me to ask a bundle?
Can I call the question?
Yes. Mr. Batman calls the question? Want a roll call, or you want it just hands?
Roll call, please.
Roll call? Yeah, make, restate what we're voting on again, just to...
Whether to move these funds into that line, or to leave them where they are.
Okay, is it your recommendation that that's, that would be a good move, Mr. Woods?
I think Mr. Palermo and I both suggested that it makes more sense to leave them where they are. But, you know, it's really, it doesn't impact the overall budget at all. Either way, you'll have to...
Well, your recommendation is, carries a lot of weight, so if you recommend it, then we'll go with it. Okay, let's call the roll.
This is two-thirds, or just simple majority?
Simple majority.
Simple majority. Okay. Okay, Tucker Whitman?
No.
Andy Dennison?
No.
Ben Vitale?
Yes.
Chris Peters?
No.
Paul Pinkney?
No.
Elaine McNapp Coleman?
Yes.
Keith Batman?
Yes.
Joe DeForest?
Yes.
Charlie Ripley?
Yes.
Joseph Bennett?
No.
Elaine Daley?
Yes.
Timothy Latimore?
No.
Michael Didio?
No.
Brian Foley?
Yes.
Patrick Mahone gets excused. Passed.
So Mr. Foley's, a motion passed?
No, I think it...
It was passed.
Just passed from the line.
Motion was to... Motion was to move the funds or leave them where they are. And it passed to leave them where they are. Okay?
No, no, no.
The motion was to amend the budget and to move these from one place to another.
So essentially, I think it was two-hundred-and-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars is moved from the various lines that are on the sheet to provision for salary adjustment account, and it appears that that passed.
Mr. Dennison?
I'm confused when our budget officer tells us, basically, I mean, it's not illegal, I guess, but it's not very transparent to move things into a line for salaries that have nothing to do with salaries. I mean, but okay. Especially when our legal advice said that's not a great idea.
Well, sometimes we sway a little bit from where we are. Next down the list is, Elaine's got some issues?
Yeah.
Or some changes?
That is, sorry. Yes, there is, I would say, there is a number of budget amendments that I'm going to propose. The first, the first three are from the administrator's budget, and the first line is A1230445067 conference fees. I'm making an amendment to reduce that budget line by two thousand dollars. That reduction will still offer an increase in that budget line by four thousand dollars from the 2018 budget. That may require a little closer monitoring, but I don't think that reduction is unreasonable. I'll go through them all if you don't mind, and then you can vote no, yes, whatever. The second amendment is, again, from the administrator's budget, A1230445058 professional dues. I'm making a motion to reduce that budget line by fifteen hundred dollars. It will still allow a six-hundred-dollar increase from the 2018 budget of nine hundred dollars, but the amendment is to reduce that line by fifteen hundred. The next is A1230445074 department expense. I'm making a motion to remove the seven thousand dollars from that line. This is an unexpended contractual obligation for the administrator's moving expenses. I think this can, should be encumbered from the 2018 budget. It may require an estimate of costs, but I, but I do think it can be covered from 2018 and not have to be budgeted in 2019. That's the rationale for that reduction. The next is in the legislative budget, and that is A1010454059, and that's in the professional services line. I'd like to make an amendment to remove twenty thousand dollars from that particular line. Twenty thousand was budgeted in case the legislature wanted to hire a consultant to help with redistricting or reorganization. Since there's no present plan to do that, if that becomes a need in the future, the legislature can vote to do, for those funds at a later date. The next is, is in the DSS budget, A6010252100, and that would be Northwoods. The cost of Northwoods, to my understanding, has increased since the tentative budget was put together, and the costs, I believe, are still being evaluated. I think it's important in this initiative that we have a clear understanding of the initial costs and the cost of this project going forward. Clearly, the addition of the two key DSS casework staff are of the highest priority at this time. Even at the initial DSS budget meeting, it was suggested that it might be appropriate to wait till the end of 2019 to implement this, especially if there were some concerns with the budget, and there are a lot of new positions and initiatives in this budget. Therefore, I think it's appropriate to look to the 2019 budget. Towards the end of the budget year, if the budget's in good shape, I would certainly support funding this initiative at the end of the year, using any available funds from DSS and/or a draw from contingency. So I'm making a motion to remove the two thousand, twenty, two-hundred thousand dollars from this budget and make the adjustment to revenue. Last is for DSS and health, DSS cars, A6010252001. I make a motion to amend the line by reducing it by six thousand, eight-hundred and forty dollars. And in the health department, A4010252001, a motion to reduce that line by twelve thousand dollars. This particular amendment still maintains the purchase of the same number of cars. DSS would end up with four. One would be of the higher cost, twenty-one thousand. The rest would be at a cost of fifteen thousand, and it will keep the sixty-two percent reimbursement for the health department. The adjustment would continue to fund two cars for the health department, but not at the twenty-one thousand dollar higher cost. I think there were some all-wheel-drive vehicles bought for those departments last year, so there would be cars in the fleet available if they needed them, but this would just reduce the expense in this car line.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Back to A1010454059, professional services. Are you recommending that we take that out of now, following the line of 10117454 that we just went through, all the hassle of moving it into?
I don't believe so.
That's the same numbers?
It is in the same line, because initially in the budget, it was seventy-five thousand dollars. Fifty-five was dedicated to ADP, and the other twenty was for this consultant, potentially for the legislature. So this is only twenty thousand out of that budget line.
We took, we moved that line.
But you moved fifty-five of it, not the total seventy-five thousand.
Mr. Bennett, just for parliamentary, parliamentary procedure, we have a motion. Is there a second for the motion? Then we can have a discussion. Seconded by Mr. Peters. Now, Joe, you can...
Okay, I, I...
It was, there was seventy-five thousand dollars in that line, Joe.
But, but, the original line, and that's why I asked for all the numbers up on top, which we didn't have, and then all of a sudden, it was thrown in there. So we moved that line into that other, other line. No, it's been moved. So now we have to, that's got to come to the legislature to be moved.
In my mind, you moved fifty-five thousand dollars out of that seventy-five thousand dollar line. The remaining twenty is the amendment I'm asking to make, to take that twenty thousand dollars out.
Mr. Ripley, you...
Fifty-five thousand, Joe was talking about, was in the ADP.
Right. But that total line had seventy-five thousand to be in.
Yeah, they were both in the same line. So the fifty-five has been moved to salary adjustment. There was twenty that was left in that line. And that's the twenty that Ms. Daley is referring to.
Mr. Whitman?
I just want a clarification. I don't even know what motion we're talking about. Are all of these bundled in one, or are we only talking about that line? Did we bundle that in a motion? All these, or...
I believe Ms. Daley said that she moved them all.
It's bundled, okay.
I'm going to just have to say, a lot of amendments had to be made of this because the revenue accounts have not been addressed, and you can't just change the net of these accounts.
Mr. Batman?
Is it not possible, I think the motion was to adjust the appropriate revenue accounts. Is that something you cannot do?
I think we're supposed to name the account numbers in the resolution.
In this resolution, there should be specific line items. I mean, I don't know how much time we have this evening, but I think we could do it.
No, I can certainly do it, but I mean, it's difficult that we're doing this all in one motion. The way, let me tell you, which is fine.
Mr. Ripley?
We're confusing the lines. The one in Mr. Foley's is Alpha 10-10, ADP. And the one that Elaine is talking about is Alpha 10-10-4, fifty-four, oh-fifty-nine, which was seventy-five thousand, and she's asking it to be reduced to fifty-five.
Right.
Well, she, it would, it would effectively make it zero, because the fifty-five that was above is in that line. And so, right now, that line sits at twenty, because the fifty-five's already been moved to the salary adjustment line. So this would, this motion, or that portion of the bundles motion, would make that line zero. So if you notice, the A10-10 line at the top, that was part of Mr. Foley's approved motion, that stops. It didn't have all the extra line after it. That's the same line, the same budget line.
So...
Mr. Foley?
Are we, are we looking at, is Lynn looking for these right now? Is that what...
There's only one revenue account, right?
Lynn, is there only one revenue account on these?
No, well, there's two. One's the health department, one's DSS. But I really would like to discuss the cars. I mean, we can't, we can't buy a car for fifteen thousand dollars. Two years ago, we bought a car for sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. So if we reduce this much, I mean, I don't know, that was the cars you were going to cost. We have to look at that. So if you wanted to get two vehicles for the cheaper, it would be nice to leave a little bit more money in there, and we won't be able to buy them. And then we'll have to bring our revenue money.
Well, let me just have some clarification. We just did a lot, a large lease with the sheriff's department, this particular department. Whenever we buy a unit, we get reimbursed from the state, do we not, on this, on these buys? So this is a better, better situation for the county to buy, where we get reimbursed, versus, let's say, a lease situation that we had with the sheriff's department. Is that correct?
Yes and no. We get the same reimbursement rate whether we buy or lease. The advantage here is, is that if you buy, your overall costs for buying are less because you're not basically financing. The lease isn't a traditional consumer lease. It's more of a equity financing. And at the end of it, you also own it. But more likely what happens is that you roll them in at a predetermined period where they still have equity. So as you're replacing them, you're only paying the net increase of the value versus running them into the ground and then buying a whole new car, which is what we've typically done.
So your recommendation is to do it this way, or to lease?
That's a decision that you can make later next year. I mean, I think the legislature made that decision this May, where they said, see how it works in the sheriff's department, and then bring it back. So if you wanted to revisit that next year, if you left the money in there for the cars, and you wanted to lease, then there may be some savings in the budget line. But if you wanted to purchase the cars, then we would need to probably leave the budget as is.
What is the flavor of the body? Put it in a bundle, and, or Lynn, do you have problems with the legalese of this?
Yeah.
Yes.
All of the above, okay. So, we want to go line by line, Lynn?
No, you're fine in the top. I'm just, just the ones at the bottom where you start to bring in DSS and the health department.
So should we leave, leave those off and vote on those separate?
Yeah.
Or maybe by department?
No, let's just do the top. Let's just do the top.
The top three?
Top three. Do we have a motion for the top three?
Wait, no, it's top six, Mr. Chairman.
Top six you want now?
Top six.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
The sixth, the fifth one is also DSS, Mr. Foley.
Okay, what would you recommend, Mr. Woods?
I can't really recommend your motions, but...
Legalese?
You know, I think it would be far simpler if we just dealt with this line by line, and if somebody wanted to make a motion to separate this, I think it would go relatively easy to see how.
Okay, let's take the first one. Motion?
Move it. Line by line. Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go line by line. First one? First up?
Do we need a motion for each individual?
Yes.
No, no, they are, the motion, you can just vote on them now, individually. And I would, I would just add, Mr. Chair, the three that relate to my office are contractual... contractual expenses. I don't know, and this would be a question for Lynn, whether you can encumber that moving expense or not.
I don't think it would be appropriate if, I don't know who the vendor is, I mean, I mean, you really have to have a bill, a purchase order.
Mr. Batman?
If I may, you can encumber any funds from one year to another if you have a valid, a valid bill, the purchase order of some such. This was for moving expenses. These stuff is either in storage, or it's, it's costs associated with movement from storage to permanent residence. The idea that you can't get the, a bill from the storage company is, well, of course you can. The idea that you can't get an estimate on what the move's going to cost, of course you can. An encumbrance does not have to, you know, an encumbrance doesn't have to be exactly right to the dollar. That's not what an encumbrance is. An encumbrance is, is to, is to, is to get a, a bill, the, a promise, a promise to deliver services, and a promise to pay for those services that's based upon a previous year's commitment. And commitment can be any number of things. It can be a bridge repairs, we've done, or it can be a moving cost is, is being proposed here. So, you do have to have bills, absolutely. But you can do it, you're just going to have to get the bills, right?
Right. And as I said, this is a budgeted item. It's not exact. I mean, at the end of the year, we have surpluses and we have minuses, so. It's a living, breathing thing.
And this is, this is a legitimate cost, out of the 2019, a legitimate cost, but out of 2019 budget, and put it in 18 where it should be. The, if you remember, the intent of this, and, and our administrator's intent, was to be fully moved and in place and done by December 2019. Well, it was more complicated than, than he or anyone thought, and so it's, there's no, there's no negativity here. There's no criticism. It's simply as a procedure. Take 2018 contractual commitment, put it in 2018, it saves the tax burden in 19.
Well, you were on that, on that committee that, that made this deal, so you want to honor that deal?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay. Is there a motion?
Which one are you doing, Tim?
I think you've already approved the first one, the conference fees. Now, now you're on the second one, professional services.
Okay.
No.
Don't have a vote on that.
Okay. Want to vote on the conference fees?
Yep.
All those in-
Roll call, please.
Roll call?
Does Nadia need a first and second for that one, or did you already do?
You have a motion, and I, I believe you already have a second to separate them. I don't know if there's any discussion on conference fees, otherwise you can-
Motion to separate. Do you need a motion on each one?
No.
Mr. Dennison?
Could we have a motion in caucus to talk about this?
We could have a caucus, but before we go into caucus, I'd like to jump over all this. We have an audience here. I'd like to, to get to Mr. DeForest's proposal, and then we can either vote that up or down, and then we can, we can caucus. Or you want to discuss that in the caucus still?
Well, we got all this stuff here, plus that. I mean-
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, but I think that caucus speaks to presidents, and there's a motion on that, I think.
Yes. Well, we, we can.
You don't need a motion in caucus. All you have to do is the minority majority leader
has to request it, and that's it. You don't-
Mr. Didio, would you like to request a caucus?
Sure.
Mr. Didio's requesting a caucus. Okay?
That's it, we don't have to vote on that. Thank you.
Can you come back in your room, please?
I will, I will.
How long you guys need?
Five minutes because I'm-